Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us on this January first school board meeting of 2025. Each school board meeting, we like to revisit our mission, vision, and core values and just remind ourselves why we're here. First, our vision is that BCSE is the choice to learn, work, and play. Our mission is to develop expert learners by partnering with our community to invest in people. And our core values are that we all can rise to the challenge of high expectations, that learning is most effective when we have choice, flexibility, and see relevance, that we thrive when our physical, social, and psychological needs are met, that our community and school district are stronger when we partner with one another, that we flourish because of the diversity and variability in our community. And last, and certainly not least, on this night of swearing in, our democracy and democratic institutions are strengthened by civic-minded citizens.
Well, thank you, Ms. Wildin. As Dr. Phillips noted, tonight is a special night for us. It is not only the first meeting of the year, but it is the first meeting of this group of board members. We have some folks who went through the election process in the fall. And as part of taking office, tonight, we have to have you take your oaths of office. So, Ms. Wildin, Mr. Blake, and Ms. Lloyd, if you three will come up in front, we're going to go through the oaths and have you take those. I will read the oath. If you do, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana, and that you will faithfully, impartially, and diligently discharge the duties of the Office of Bartholomew Consolidated School Board according to law and to the best of your ability? So help you God.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations to all of you. You have some agreements that you have to sign, and you will end up getting copies of these for you as well. So I'm going to pass these down. If you would sign them, then pass them back to me. And then, at this point, just for the benefit of the audience, because this is the first first meeting of the year, brief kind of summary. Ms. Wildin has the ranking member from the prior board can call us to order. This group will then elect a temporary chairperson who can lead us through the process of electing officers for the coming year. And then that elected president for the group will take over and run the meeting at that point. So, Ms. Wildin, if you call the meeting.
We do have a form, so I'll call the meeting in order. I believe I need a motion for a temporary chair.
I move that we appoint Nikki Wildin as temporary chair.
Mr. Allen, who am I to second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of myself serving as temporary chair, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Just up for you for a few more minutes. Okay, since we are about to make a decision on future officers, any public comments related to officer selection should take place now. So I don't wish it was making its way to me. Don't have those anything.
Ms. Wildin, since we have votes on one specific item here pending, the officers, the selection of officers, I propose that we take public comment at this time, specific to that one vote. And then, the regular portion of the agenda, when we do the public comments, we both signed up to speak. We were called for you at that point in time. At this time, since we have a vote pending ahead of us, we're required to take, by state law, we're required to take public comment before a vote occurs. And so, since we have this pending vote, at this time, we would want to ask anyone in the audience who would like to submit a public comment, come up and speak specific to the selection of the officer slate for calendar year 2025. At this time, anyone from the audience, feel free to come up to the podium and speak to the slate of officers for 2025. Okay, thank you. There will be a regular portion later on in the agenda when we have the folks who sign up speaking.
I feel compelled to tell the audience that this is the meeting of all meetings, okay? We have a lot of process to go through tonight. The process for us electing officers will move like this. We will take nominations, starting with president down to secretaries. There's three officer positions. Once nominations are made, we will vote. Every board member gets one vote of whatever slate of nominees is presented. Majority rules. And if we don't have majority on the first, go ahead. We'll continue to vote until we do. So, at this point, I believe we'll take nominations for school board president.
Nominate Nikki Wildin for school board president.
Thank you, Mr. Stennis.
I'd like to nominate Lenny Charles for school board president.
Thank you, Ms. Chittler. Any other nominations for the good vote? All those in favor of Nicole Wildin serving as BCS school board, please say aye. Get one vote.
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor of Ellen Schultz as school board president, please say aye.
Aye.
I believe Nicole Wildin won for three vote.
I agree.
Next, we will take nominations for school board vice president.
I would like to nominate Mr. Stennis as vice president. I'll nominate Jason Major for vice president.
Any other nominations? Same as before, you get one vote. All those in favor of Mr. Stennis serving as BCS school board vice president, please say aye.
Aye.
That's four votes. All those in favor of Jason Major, our school board vice president, please say aye.
Aye.
For three, Mr. Stennis, which is our vice president. Do you concur, aye?
I agree.
Next is school board secretary. Any nominations?
Yeah, I'll nominate Lenny Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Major. I'd like to nominate Mr. Allen. Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Any other nominations? All those in favor of Mr. Tom Wood as school board secretary, please say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of Mr. Allen as school board secretary, please say aye.
Aye.
I believe it's four thirty.
I agree.
Congratulations. So Nicole Wildin president, Mr. Stennis vice president, and Mr. Allen as secretary for school board 2025. Congratulations.
We're on good move seats. Congratulations, yes. We'll just have to platter regardless of where you're sitting. Rearrange the seats by the later.
I believe next on the agenda is United Way.
All right. Thank you, members of the board. This is our annual celebration of our longstanding relationship with United Way of Bartholomew County. Every year in the fall, both our students and our staff each do a campaign to raise money for one of the most important organizations in this community. And we are proud of the fact that this year, our, between our student campaign and our staff campaign, that we raised nearly $24,000. And I believe that we learned earlier today that the online contributions actually pushed it higher. Is that right, Mrs. Christman?
It actually was the numbers from last year.
Oh, okay, thank you. So, last year's numbers were higher than that. But, we, again, we're proud that, we know that many of our families and BCSE as an organization benefits from the hard work that Sarah Davis and other folks at the United Way do for this community. And so, this time, we are excited to present this giant check to the United Way of Bartholomew County.
I would just like to say how thankful I am for the partnership that we have with BCSE, not just with the fundraising piece, but the student support line and all of the other things that we are able to partner with to help make things happen for kids in our community that would otherwise not have a resource to make those things happen for them. So, we are super grateful for all of the partnerships with the teachers and all of the staff that support United Way and utilize us to help the kids that you serve. So, thank you.
All right, board. Here we go. This is the first one of the year. We'll see how the height of the new board works out with the pictures. Good evening. You know, I didn't have to wait an hour and a half tonight. This is awesome. Each year in the month of January, we're required to have a board of finance report to the board. This is a requirement from the state legislature. We have three different pieces to this that we need to do. We need to appoint our finance officers. We need to discuss the investment policy that the school board has. And then also talk about the distressed unit appeals board, or DOAB, if that's my favorite phrase. As is typical for BCSE, we appoint the board president and board secretary to our board of finances officers. So congratulations, Nicole and Dale. I know you're ready for this, right? Looking at our investment policy, we follow BCSE policy 6144, where we are able to invest school corporation monies for two years or less in U.S. Treasury notes, bank CDs, or in money market sweep accounts. In 2024, we had some of our funding within the First Financial Bank with their money market sweep account. For the first nine months of the year, we had a rate of 4.5%. The last three months have dropped to 4.25%, but we were still able to receive a return of a little over $677,000. New to BCSE this year, we joined in the Trust Indiana Investment Group. That's made up of municipal government facilities, units throughout the state. We pool our money. For the first nine months of the year, we had an interest return of 5.31%. The last three months of the year did drop a little bit, but maintained above 4.5% for the remainder of the year. And in that, we had a return of $2.6 million. And finally, within treasuries, we invested our extracurricular activity reserves, $950,000 of those dollars, they had annualized return of 4.3%, which gave us a little over $38,000 for the year. For the full year, with those three investment areas that we used, we had a return of 3.35 million, which is a 10% growth over last year. And if you look, the eight preceding years, that's more than double any year we'd had previously. Of course, interest rates across the board, we all saw were great the last couple of years, and we were able to benefit from that. Any questions on investments?
What's the total amount of invested principal?
I'll look that up and get back with you, and I'll get it all to you tomorrow morning. And the final piece of our board of finance report is to discuss the distressed unit appeals board, the fiscal indicators. This was a legislation that took effect back in 2019 as a result of two separate Indiana communities that had school corporations that had serious financial issues. They placed these DOAB indicators or at the website. If you plug in DOAB into your Google, it'll take you right to this site and will show what the indicators are that gives them an idea of how school corporations are doing financially. Unfortunately, what's on the site lags a little bit. The majority of the numbers on there are from 2022. They have some 2023 numbers now loaded, just in the last week. But when I checked two weeks ago, right after Christmas, they still just had 2022 numbers. So they do lag a little bit. But that tells you about the complexity of school financing and how it is hard to get it all in one place and to gather it all together. But the board has very talented, very well-educated people in the finance field that study these and can give a local education unit plenty of time to notice that they're starting to slide into a distressed area. They'll notify the board. They'll work with the board to improve their financial standing. And if we were ever in that case, we would immediately report to the board if we had any situations like that. But as you can see from our investments we've had, we are in very good shape. And in the fourth quarter report that I'll give you at the next board meeting, you'll see BCSE is in very good financial standing. Any questions? Dr. Bozeman, I think I said DOAB twice, right? Thank you very much.
Okay, do you have any board member reports? I will start with Mr. Allen. Come on, any committees currently served? Any amendments or last meetings?
Yes, I have an update with the Council for Youth Development. We met on December 12. And the big news there is that they are hoping to partner with the Surgeon Institute in three hundred cities, Philadelphia, San Antonio, Texas, and San Jose, California, on a three-year project called Thriving in Thriving Cities, Thriving Youth in Thriving Cities. And the project will identify and implement community strategies to support opportunities for youth and identify and mobilize local leaders to help implement. And then we spent a good part of the meeting looking at local data and commenting on future strategies from that. Most of our future strategies were more data. It was a good meeting.
I have the Hall of Fame committee met in December and selected its winner. It is Carla Hudy. She's a forty-year educator at Central Middle School, Social Studies Chair. She's been involved in coordinating a lot of the DC trips for the past years and also several other extracurricular activities and leading that for the students. So I just wanted to let everyone know that she's been selected and the reception will be next meeting.
Just feel like a round of applause for her, yes. Have you seen Mr. Blake yet? Is he in? It's okay.
I had a county redevelopment meeting today. A couple of notable items. There are two major facilities being built by the interchange on 31 and 165. See, one is starting to get walls. That's a pickle factory. Great exciting. It's part of an irresistible food group conglomerate that is building several facilities here. So they are due to open yet this year in 2025, 150 jobs. So this is very exciting for the community. And then, there's been a lot of press about Kings Hawaiian. You can see their concrete pad now. So they don't have walls yet. They're a little bit behind on the building project, but they will open in 2026, another 150 jobs. So, I'm starting seeing some more work going on in that side of town. This committee meets usually four to five times a year. The next meeting is event till sometime in April. So that will be next meeting Friday, April 15.
Ms. Wildin, I'll just add to that, that the Irresistible Food Group has been very excited to partner with us as a district, particularly be a partner at Taylorville Elementary School. They've reached out multiple times about, they toured the building once and told them that we have a food pantry located inside of Taylorville Elementary. And they said, that's what we can have. I'm excited about that partnership.
Mr. Bennett?
Nothing to say, thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
Nothing from past meetings. It's new. I've got upcoming meetings, Health Trust, for example, on Fridays.
Okay, cabinet reports.
Ms. Wildin, before we jump into cabinet reports, I could just take a moment to commiserate about snow. But more specifically, just share some information and some reflections on last week. We had a little bit of everything last week. And we had a teacher work day that turned into a virtual day. We had a first day of school that turned into a snow day. We had a second day of school that turned into a two-hour delay. And then we had a third day of school that frankly, we missed. We swum and missed on Friday. We, you know, we do the best that we can with the information that we have in front of us at the time. And the decision not to cancel school on Friday, you know, was frankly, the wrong decision. It was ultimately my call. We talked to lots of different folks. We almost always talk to the city, county, emergency management, our transportation department, our operations department, engage all of those folks in conversations about, you know, what's the most likely situation? What's the best outcome for kids and for the district? And, but ultimately, it's my, at the end of the day, someone has to make the decision and on early Friday morning, make the decision to go ahead and go to school, we thought at the time. I wouldn't make sense of it. But because of that, I know that it put a lot of folks in a tough situation on Friday afternoon. Some people I've talked to have said, well, it seemed, you know, there was a lot of snow coming down. It didn't seem that bad. And I said to some of those folks in the admin building, you didn't hear the transportation radio. If you had heard the transportation radio, you would have known how bad it was. So, of course, I know we put, you know, our students and our families in a tough situation getting home that day. Thankfully, everyone arrived home safely. But we also put our bus drivers and our operations team in a really tough place on, starting, you know, Friday afternoon. They were scrambling around, not expecting the snow to come down that quickly. So we had people exerting themselves physically on Friday afternoon, trying to get that snow clear before the kids walked out of the building. And then, you know, well into the evening, on a Friday evening, we had our bus drivers and our transportation team out, you know, both struggling to get kids home and then also struggling to get our buses back. So, I want to take this opportunity to, number one, say thank you to those teams who really did amazingly and got every single one of our kids home unharmed and safely on Friday. I also want to say thanks to those who contacted us directly. I know some of you may be here tonight. I didn't meet everyone before the meeting, but I spoke to several of you on the phone and emailed several of you. And every person, you know, heard back from us within twelve to twenty-four hours or so, either via email or via phone, and had positive, productive feedback from you and really good conversation. So thanks to those who reached out to us with their concerns on either Friday or all the way even through today. We also are grateful that we had three days of learning, but not at the expense of the safety of our students and staff. I do want to point out, there are a few things that we are doing, as I reflected over the weekend and then had conversations with our leadership, some of our leadership teams this morning. Number one, we're looking at our internal processes for examining all of the variables that are out there when you make a decision about whether or not it's safe for kids to come to school or not. The factor that was the biggest outlier for us this year is that we've not had a situation where we had that much existing snow already on the ground. Now, I don't know if that would make a difference or not, if there was no snow. The snow was coming down pretty hard by Friday afternoon, but we already had twelve inches of snow on the ground prior to Friday afternoon. One of the other things that we've always, it was 2004, actually, the spring of 2005. Some of you may remember, the last time this district had an early dismissal. I knew Dale were nervous, because he's up north from me. That was the last time we had an early dismissal, was an unexpected early dismissal. Looking out in the crowd, some of you were students at this time, I think. It was an unexpected early dismissal due to flooding. We had a lot of snow on the ground, but then it rained on top of that and there was snow melt. And the county called us and said, we're getting ready to close about half the streets of this community. So you're very good to get some now. And it took, I want to say, six or seven hours to get everybody home because it was unexpected. One of the things that, thanks to Dr. Bozeman and actually some of the parents that I spoke to, an unexpected early dismissal is a bad thing and can be chaotic. But we've had a late arrival schedule in our place, a two-hour delay schedule in place for years. We've never had an early dismissal schedule in place. And so we're going to work with our teams, first education, then transportation-wise, to build what a schedule would look like. If we would have had that in place for Friday, we certainly, almost certainly would have considered, let's just follow our early dismissal schedule, go to school until noon or half-day in, and then get the kids home. So that's one of the things, other things we're going to work on. And then, also, there was a decision around canceling high care, the kid very late in the afternoon, that we're going to revisit that whole process because it disrupted, you know, not only the situation from the staff, as they were trying to figure out, okay, we have twenty minutes, we've got a whole lot of these parents, and we can figure out what to do with these students. But then, for parents, we really put, parents of students that are in high care in a tough spot as they scramble to figure out how to get to their students. So, those are just a handful of the page, page and a half or so of items that we're working on. But I wanted to, I know, I know there's probably some folks here tonight that have signed up to speak on this topic, and please do so. But I wanted to let you know that, number one, we own the fact, and I own the fact that it was the wrong decision on Friday, and we're doing things to address that.
To that, well, I was asked to just bring up two topics. So, one is maybe next year, prior to Christmas, kids take their Chromebooks home. That way, they're at least prepared in case the weather gets bad. And for some parents, you mentioned early dismissal. But early decision is, I think, what a lot of the parents I've heard from really look for, especially ones that have work that may not get canceled, even though school does. So it puts an extra burden on them to take a vacation day, to take a lost date for it or something. So they really want to make sure that whatever you come up with from an appointment, that we can get the decision now efficiently, effectively, and quicker so that they can plan on what they do. plan on what they, what they do and how they manage their time with their kids in case kids have to get picked up or watched during the time of the afternoon.
Can we speak to that just really briefly? The two things we want to be sure of is, is one, we want to go to school if we can. And so there's often times where we're waiting to see what the conditions are going to be at five o'clock because we're relying on a forecast that frankly, sometimes is incorrect. And so we're waiting on that and the, and so we're going to assume we're going to go to school until that happens. Now, on Tuesday, on Monday, Tuesday, there was no indication whatsoever that the conditions were going to be meaningfully different between nine o'clock the night before and five o'clock the next morning. Those conditions were bad. So those were relatively easy to make that decision and put that information out by nine o'clock. Oftentimes though, when it's a situation where it may warm up and turn rain or it may turn to ice, we're waiting to see what that'll look like. The second thing that we want to avoid is making two different decisions and have families have to react twice. So we never want to do a delay and then change that to a cancellation. Because we say delay and folks make plaintiffs, they say, okay, I gotta figure out how, you know, somebody, you know, watch my child until nine o'clock or whatever the time is. And then if we change that to a cancellation, we know that's incredibly disruptive. So those are the two things that, as we think about the timings of those announcements, I know folks would like for us to say, well, just say you're going to delay, but we don't want to do that to be changing. So we do like to make sure we make one call and make that be followed.
Would it be too disruptive though to be able to say, hey, here's the game plan. We're going to go with a two-hour delay with the potential of maybe cancellation. That way, parents can be planning and teachers and staff as well can plan ahead. I think to me, knowing that there's a game plan and there's a stair step possibility there, that's not as disruptive as just a two-hour delay and the last minute cancellation. Cause a lot of my feedback was, why was there nothing communicated at all, period? And kind of what Jason put out, but I don't know. I think communicating the plan, showing intent is way better than no communication at all and living and dying on assumptions.
What was that last thing you did, Tom? The last thing you said?
So showing intent and communicating a game plan, even if it is going to change, that communication's there and we as a community, corporation, superintendent, so on and so forth, if we're going to just live and die on assumptions, there's going to be mass chaos. So if we at least communicate a plan there and show that there's intent to, for the plan, we can develop some plans at home as well.
I think, let me just make sure I understand what you're saying, that when folks don't hear anything, they're making assumptions. And so if I say something, sharing what the plan is, then folks can act based on that plan as opposed to assumptions, is that right? When you said live and die on assumptions.
So people have no idea what's going on and like you said, we're, we're making the assumption that we're going to school. So at least communicate a plan that we're going to go to school, whether it be a decision to cut off plan at five or six, whichever may be, or hey, we're going to go with a two-hour delay with the potential of closing school. So just communicate prior to, like, we're the only school corporation in the area that not, that did not communicate a plan, even if it was our intent is to go to school. That communicates to the community that there is a decision made to answer what there was requested from you.
Yes, let me hear your statement there. Thank you.
Because we're on the topic, I was actually going to say to the end, but one question I got, I got from several parents, we're a county, so we're in the county. The city road through up there, my road unfortunately, it lives right on the city limit, so the city doesn't claim it and neither does the county apparently. So we got our first plow on Saturday. When a parent deems that their child is unable to get to school, the standing order has always been that's an excused absence. And I'm getting a lot of conflicted feedback across the district, so I think that's one thing we need to make sure we clarify with the public is, a parent deems it's not safe for my kid to get to the bus stop, I mean, at that point, I don't know if penalizing the child or the parent at home makes the most sense. That was one thing that I got feedback from, I'd say at least a dozen or so of us, was the unexcused absence situation.
And just, just to be clear, and I'll say it here and it's on YouTube, so we'll go back and of course, put it out there. So if a, if a parent keeps their child at home because of weather or inability to get out of their driveway or down the street because of weather, as long as that student doesn't have a chronic truancy issue and they haven't already accrued, you know, in that sixteen, eighteen absence timeframe, it will be an excused absence. The one thing that I do want to make sure of is that, we have all these technical terms, as Mr. Reddick shared earlier in the language, in the world of education, that does not mean a non-absence. It doesn't mean that the student is counted present. It just means that it's an excused absence, there's no punishment and the student can make up any work that's missed on that day. Is that right, Mrs., or Dr. Hack? Is that accurate description?
That is correct.
Okay. And thank you again for letting us go on that rant there and share the work that we've been doing to get back.
To ensure that's communicated well, is that in the handbooks or is that in policy?
I have to go back and look at the weather, specifically the weather-related one because the state has changed the codes around the tenant so much, but we'll take a look.
And that might be good, even if it's not in handbook, that might be another thing for next year too, is to just let people know with your handbooks that this is the weather policy.
You remind me of one more thing, and I apologize for letting this one, but I think you want to point out another thing, that the continuous improvement, uh, work that we're doing. If school's supposed to start at eight o'clock and you have a two-hour delay, what time does school start? At ten o'clock, that's right. But that doesn't mean that all the other things change in the same way. And so thanks to Dr. Staub on her team, we've built a two-hour delay schedule that will be on our website that shows if your start time was this, what is the start time? And that's for every school, even though, you know, you can make the assumption that it's always two hours right after that. So that'll be posted on our website from now on as well. We've got a whole lot of phone calls from folks, what time does this start?
Dr. Reddick, can we talk about envision twenty thirty, please?
I would be happy to. Thank you, Mrs. Wilton. Thank you, board members and Dr. Phillips. We have a standing item on our board agenda for envision twenty thirty updates and sometimes I'll give you updates and other times I will not, just depending on the flow of work and where things are. We have, we have a, most of our board meetings coming up are now monthly versus bimonthly, so you may see a little more frequent update from me. And for the most part, I'm going to reference the slide on the, on the screen. You all have copies at your seat and there are some available on the table there for members of the public that, that maybe didn't grab one, you're welcome to grab, go take a look. So just as a reminder, this is phase one of our envision twenty thirty projects that we're working on. I'll speak through these briefly and answer any questions that you, that you may have. Highlighted at the top is the, the L. Francis Smith Elementary renovation. That project is currently finishing design development and moving into construction documents, which basically means we are getting very close to go out to bid for that project. That's about a twenty million dollar near full renovation of Smith Elementary. Interesting item of, of that work is we have been working with and consulting with a gentleman named Kristen Johansson, who is the son of the original architect. And Chris and his dad actually designed the additions on Smith Elementary in the early nineties. He's been working with us via Zoom, he lives in Upstate New York, very supportive of work and had a lot of fun to have those conversations with Chris and learn about some of the history of that, of that building. Moving around counterclockwise, I suppose, the Richard L. Johnson Early Education Center, that phase one project is complete. You have an approval item in your board package tonight for contractor approval for phase two. Phase one of those four classrooms on the south end are now occupied by students in their childhood program while we begin work on the north end of that building. Continuing on, Smith, I spoke about already, Columbus East High School is a project within the C four apartment upstairs on the second floor. That is a biomedical, two-classroom biomedical and lab renovation to that space that will, you may recall our time in the past, talking about our needs, our extremely high demand in C four area with our students, so that's helping address that need there at Columbus East. I'll skip over to the bottom right-hand corner, Columbus North High School is a two-classroom project, very small scope for biomedical classrooms and lab work at Columbus North High School for the same purpose. Mount Healthie Elementary, we are, we are starting that organization of that design team here this month. So that's the latter of the phase one projects. I'll show you a schedule on the next slide that will remind you of that timeline, but just getting started with Mount Healthie, that's, that's a building, as you all know, that needs to be addressed. It's an open concept building that creates, because of that design, there's some learning environment challenges that we need to address in that space. Moving up to Middle Colm, Central Middle School, that's another smaller project to do some work in the media center and then address repurposing space for wellness for those that are providing counseling services so they can be centrally located together to provide better service for families and students versus in random offices throughout the building. Schmidt Elementary has finished phase one and is now in phase two. Phase one is the completion of the main office and relocated to the north end of the building along Company Seventh Street. Phase two is the existing kindergarten wing and the addition of three classrooms in the west courtyard. If you drive by Schmidt, you'll see that the foundation's poured and the steel framing is up for that. The New Elementary School, number twelve, which will not be the name of the school, we'll get that name with your support here in the next few months, hopefully by the end of the semester. That with a lot of work from CSO and Howland, Youn, and Ataboston is coming along quite well. Finishing up some decisions on the exterior facade of that building. Howland, Youn and that team were in town just last week, working with the teacher design team to address some exterior and some interior finishes there. Keep your gears open, we will here soon invite the community back out to the West Side Community Church for a full presentation of that, of that building. We get a little bit further down the road and a little more confident with our construction drawings and budget. And finally, North Side Middle School, as you know, the larger of the projects up there outside of the New Elementary, that's a fifty million dollar near full renovation to North Side Middle School. That is also exiting the design development phase into construction documents. That, that project's had a lot of budget work done to it, but fortunately, no major overhauls to the teaching and learning environment and we will soon be ready to put that to bid. And the next slide, this is the same schedule that you've seen before. Who has a clicker, thank you. So just as a reminder, these are, most of these projects are under packages of construction managers. So you see North Side and North are combined together, Smith and East. As a reminder, North Side and Columbus North are with Meyer and Ageam. Smith Elementary and Columbus East High School, Maxwell Construction. The New Elementary is with Taylor Brothers, Pepper Construction, they're working together on that. And the GC or general contract bids at the bottom you see there. So we are soon to go to bid here, first with Smith and East will be bid together and then a month later, we'll put North Side and North out on the street and open those bids and then finally the New Elementary for the top three packages there. With that, that is your vision twenty thirty update. I have to answer any questions?
How's the team at Schmidt holding up with all of their renovations?
Uh, they are doing well. The, any of these projects, as Parkside folks will tell you, is there's always lava in the tunnel and it's always tough to get there, but, but Schmidt's in a good spot for sure. So everything's on schedule and even with some, some weather challenges the past couple weeks, obviously, we're still on schedule for things. Not to get nerdy on things, but they are, we get concrete poured, we had that really warm weather about two weeks ago and got the steel put up the next day and then the cold weather and snow hit and we're fortunate because that really looks such bad, we, we were unfortunate there. So, so far, so good.
Yeah, thank you. We talked a couple meetings ago about temporary classrooms at Schmidt. Is, is that, can you remind me, is that, is it still on schedule and is it for next August or Thursday?
Our goal is to get them in there by spring break. That might be a little aggressive, but I, I approved the PO for it yesterday, so we're, we're moving in that direction still, so. Yep. And again, that is due to increasing enrollment, she had, and we're seeing to rectify some of those concerns.
All right, we are going to skip ahead one as Mr. Edwards is traveling and is still a little bit out, probably twenty-five minutes out, so we'll skip ahead to policy review, that's our, Mrs. Wilton. Okay, so this is the third package of policies that we're consolidating the existing old Neola policies into more digestible and more friendly to the public. It's much fewer policies. I don't think I took the opportunity to point out last time, but I could be wrong. So stop me if that's the case, but probably more than a year ago, Mr. Major made a suggestion that we have all of our policies, at least translated or able to be translated into Spanish, the largest second language spoken in our community. We're proud to say that all of the first round of policies, the ones that probably three or four, four meetings ago, those are all posted to Word docs now and then at the bottom of them, there's a Spanish version for all of those. So we're sending those off and we're easily able to be done automatically, so we're, I believe we're partnering with COTSA to translate those documents for us and everyone. These new policies will also be developed in Spanish. Thank you. Thank you for the suggestion. So these next, this next package of policies is ten policies that will replace all or part of eighteen policies. You might remember that a week ago, when this agenda came out, it was eleven and thirty-one, or so, it was something, eleven new policies replacing thirty-one. Because of the new Title IX guidance ruling that just came down and the new federal Department of Education Administration moving in this fall, I'm sorry, this January, we made the decision to pull the anti-arrest and anti-discrimination policy, leave the existing policy in place and we're, we've been told that it's very likely that that new guidance will come out in a new administration within the next couple of months. And so we'll bring that back in front of you when that time happens. In the meantime, we have these ten policies, communicable diseases, board authority philosophy, age entrance, age, that's kindergarten first grade entrance requirements, test security provisions for assessments, field trips, board staff communications, college and early university programs, purchasing procedures in capital assets, use of credit cards and vehicle idling is the last one. You'll notice on the screen that after eighty-four oh five, the Neola policy on vehicle idling says add a later date. There are parts of eighty-four oh five that need to stay in place until the new policies catch up with them. So eighty-four oh five will stay in place until even after you approve, you approve the G two five, the vehicle idling policy, eighty-four oh five will stay in place until other policies that will place that whole thing come back. We will, we will track and do on that policy on the website that many of those have been replaced by G two four five, so there's not conflicting policy on the website at the same time. Just a reminder, as we talked about, I get several pieces of feedback and questions from board members and we had some, some email exchanges. If there is an interest on the board to schedule a board work session to discuss any of these policies in further depth between now and the next board meeting, it would just be a motion to pull one or more of these and then we would schedule that board work session on that policy and hopefully bring it back at the same meeting in February for a second reading, even, even with the changes, as long as there are a certain number of days between the two, between the work session. So any questions, discussion? So any questions, discussion, or desire of the board to pull any of these out and schedule a session on it?
There are a few board members that have feedback on D 8175. I did see responses come through from Dr. Phillips on notes, and that was the only policy that hadn't been for the one, and it maybe wasn't totally straightforward, which is why I wanted to get sure we brought that up. But if you're comfortable with the response, it will be current wording.
I have emailed several questions, and Dr. Phillips answered very promptly. I have some ongoing questions, not about the policies, but how we communicate the information in the policies to the people that affects, that does that policy so.
Yeah, I think the hardest one for me is board staff communications. I think at some point, all of us will be in a situation where we're not supposed to talk to people about the problems they have, but the problems will be brought to us. We can redirect, we can tell them to talk to other people, but at some point, they're talking to you because they don't know that they can probably trust talking to other people. So they're looking for someone to talk to, and I think it's, it's a difficult one because, you know, obviously, we're not going to talk to people about the temperature in the room, right? It's, it's set at 72 and I want it at 68, right? I mean, that's not stuff that we would talk about. But I, I can tell you that I've had, and I know other people have had, some really interesting conversations about problems they have, and trying my best to redirect those where they can. I know before Christmas, I spoke with a bunch of students at East that had some questions, and I redirected them to, to the appropriate people. And I know that Mr. Hack is going to take care of the concerns that there are. But I think sometimes there's going to be people that want to, want to talk to someone else different. It's not about undermining anybody, it's just they don't, for whatever reason, feel safe or comfortable talking to the person that they would have to talk to next. And so I think that one I struggle with because, again, it tells us we can't do that. So that's why, that's why I feel that one should have some flexibility, especially when, you know, it's, it's a, a person that has a problem with their leader, whatever level that may be.
That's one of the ones that I had similar concern with, and, and my concern is that I have had a number of staff members email me or text me and say they would like to talk to me about something, but they're not sure they're allowed to talk to me. And that's, or I think it's that we need to communicate to staff what's an unofficial communication versus this says, staff shall submit all official communications in a certain way, but sometimes it's just a conversation about school stuff, but it's not necessarily something that needs to go to their higher supervisor. Or sometimes just seeing they've already talked to their higher supervisor on, they just want the board to be aware of the situation. So, so again, it's not as much the policy as, as how do we, for me, how do we communicate what specifically staff members, how can the approach is, I don't want to, I don't want to be unapproachable. And, and also, I mean, I've also had staff members talk to me about things with their kids that's not about their position as a staff. And, and those same people, they think they're not allowed to do that. And I think part of that goes to history several years ago, in my venture. As a staff member, I thought it was true, so I think.
Well, and I think it from a standpoint of them talking to their, about their kids, it's not a problem. And it's, again, going back to right before break, I said, I summarized everything that I spoke with those kids about. We had a, I think there was a counselor in the room with us when I talked to the kids, and, and I sent all that to all the appropriate people. So I think from that standpoint, we need to have the ability to do that, because that's where, that's where they felt comfortable talking. I think we've all had other conversations that lead to side conversations somewhere with another individual that says, hey, you might want to think about this because someone's frustrated, right? So I think it, we should be able to be additional conduit. I don't think we're the leaning post for everybody's problems. That's why we need to be able to redirect them to the appropriate areas. And that's where, if they don't feel comfortable doing that, we should be able to listen at least.
I think I asked, so I don't know if anybody here said we feel like we need to rewrite this. I think there's a concern about how it's interpreted by the staff of B C S E and generally speaking, if they ever move forward, probably be open to having a conversation with the staff member, but recognizing some of the things you said that we should redirect. We don't want people to be afraid to converse with us. So maybe you could recommend how, how this could be communicated to staff in practice. Not necessarily a policy change, but just making sure that we, that we don't have misconceptions that could be lingering from old ways, which is what I was saying. Am I summarizing them correctly for folks?
Well, I, I think the way it's written now, to, to allow those conversations, you have to rewrite it. It's not, you can't rewrite it and say, or you can't leave it where it says they can't talk to us about school things like that. And then tell them off to the side, go ahead and talk to them, because now you've got conflicting things. So if, if we want to allow them to be able to have a conversation with us, and we all understand that we have to follow a process and push them back towards the right people and give them good guidance, then we would have to rewrite the policy.
So, so let me add here, I'm okay not rewriting it, but if Mr. Major thinks that we need an executive, whatever kind of session, public work session, to work on that, I would be happy to second that.
Okay. I can't make motions, but other people can make motions.
I motion that we pull D 175 for a public working session prior to next meeting.
I second that.
Mr. Schults, Mr. Major. Not Mr. Major, you're Mr. Matt. Okay, all of us in favor of pulling D 175 to be discussed in a public work session that will be scheduled and, and shared via website, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Public work session will be scheduled.
Thank you. Any other questions on the other policies?
The only question that I really came up with, do we foresee any of these being challenged or potentially verbiage change based on incoming legislation pending in the next four weeks?
Just the one that we pulled already, A 100, the anti-discrimination, anti-arresting policy. All the rest here, it consists of law, not subject to federal. Okay, thank you. All right, we tried, Charles, he's, he's just a handful of minutes out, and so we're going to go ahead and begin on this portion of the presentation on our 2024 B C S E graduation rates. We do have some guests here this evening from both North and Columbus North and Columbus East High Schools, from last year's senior cohort teams. And so at whatever slide you all are supposed to come up, you come on up, and I'll stop talking at that point. Does that sound good? Thanks, Laurie. Okay, so our graduation rate back in 2014, 2015, even in 2016, was consistent, pretty close to the, to the state average. And right around that 90, that 90% graduation rate. And particularly at the time, we were very proud of the number and the percentage of academic honors and technical honors diplomas that we had. As the state graduation rates started to tick down, B C S Es also did so, but actually at a faster clip. In the last two years of the graduation, in 2022, of just over 81%, and in 2023, just over 83%. We came to this board, or a board pretty similar to this, and asked to really make a pretty dramatic swing at, at a new program that we thought could dramatically impact this. And he's not here yet, but I'm going to give him credit. Somebody, I don't remember who it was on the board, asked Mr. Edwards during a meeting a while back, how long do you think before we see results? And I cringed when, when Dr. Edwards said immediately. Man, he's really, he's really, he's really, you know, swinging for the fence with this one. But we're excited to say that this cohort model immediately did have an impact with the very first cohort group that worked with a team. Pause slowly, make sure Levi and Lori don't stand up, get up here. So a reminder to those in the public and those on the board, what we did was create grade-specific listed student success teams here with each of the cohorts. So there are eight teams, four, I say cohorts as graduating cohorts, so there are four teams at North, four teams at East. At Columbus East, each of the teams has a, an assistant principal, a counselor, and an academic coach. And at Columbus North, an assistant principal, a counselor, and two academic coaches because the cohort, the number of students at North is much, much higher than over East. And so through taking a large high school, that one of them has 1,200 students, and then it was somewhere around the neighborhood of 2,200, and making it a small, smaller school experience, surrounded each cohort with a group of adults that stays with them from year to year, allows them to build relationships and give each one of those students a more personalized experience. We really felt, I think, after we looked at other schools that had implemented this model, that there was no way it could have a negative impact, and we just really didn't know how immediately it has such a large impact. And the cohort model's built on very simple principles. Get to know your students, get to know their families, and help them graduate. That's it. Now, there are lots of things, I just look at the team members of the cohorts that are sitting out there right now, and there are so many things that they do to make this happen. The number of resources that they bring together, the number of different programs that they know about, they get kids enrollment, and they connect students with social service entities that may help meet the needs of our students. This looks really simple. These folks know how really complex the cohort model can be. But I like to talk about, and I've talked several times this year, about clearing the path for folks. Because when you're a public school, I used to call it the Walmartization of public schools, which means we're all things to all people. And it's very easy to get caught up in, wow, we have 1,200 students, or we have 2,200 students, and we have this unlimited number of complexities and, and problems that these students bring to us, and strengths that they bring to us. And it can be really overwhelming to try and say, we, we have to meet all the needs of all these students all the time. And by clearing the path and say, here's a team of adults, you're assigned these students, and you have one task. Help them graduate by building relationships. And the results will speak for themselves here in a moment. I'll hear terms of the law. He's going to speak to the common sheet, which is a really critical element of the cohort model. Is using a common language and consistent across all eight of our teams in the two high schools about how we speak about the progress of each of these teams.
All right, thanks for the opportunity to, to come in here tonight and celebrate this. We're really excited, want to thank my team, who've done a great job getting us through this. We have our high grade team and our special ed coordinator here with us, and then also our cohort team, and place academic coach, and our guidance counselor, our academic coach, that appear today. And then, so just want to give them a shout out, thanks for taking the time to be here. Every Monday, we get together as a group, and we meet and have a conversation first thing in the morning, 8 o'clock. We like the, the early time slot, so we come in right away, have a conversation, we're using the common sheet, using the common sheet and going through very specific pieces of information. And that is going to look at demographics, it's going to look at some of our data points that we analyze and go through on a weekly basis. And what we're doing is we're trying to make sure we're capturing every individual that we can to help put supports in place to get them where they can be successful. So every, every, every Monday, we go around the horn and we talk about what we can do to support those individuals. Those who may be credit deficient, but also those who are doing well, and what supports we may be able to do to continue to allow them to grow in, in our building and our space. And the common sheet is part of that, part of that guide as we work through that. We also want to put a big emphasis on communicating with families. And last year, our goal was to make sure that each one of our cohorts was at 100% communication with families. And so we were striving to have that accomplished before graduation day, which we were able to do at, at North for all cohorts. This year, we challenged ourselves to move that up, to have it done at the end of Semester One, which we were able to, to accomplish here. So a little extra challenge for us to make sure we can make a, a contact before we went into winter break with every family, which we, we were able to, to do. And part of that is having conversations in those meetings. What's going well? We want to celebrate, do the, celebrate the little wins as well as the big wins. And we want to make sure not all of our contacts are about issues we may be seeing, but we want to celebrate those, those individuals as well. So some of those conversations happen in passing. We've had, we've seen people at Kroger, and we can stop and, and share a, a great conversation. Others are through Parents Square, or emails, or some phone calls, but finding different ways to make those contacts and be able to make those touches.
I'm Ms. Stanley, assistant principal at East High School, and I'd like to recognize my 2024 cohort team. Coach Oliver, academic coach, Callie Axum, special ed, and Carrie Abdullah, the administrative assistant of the team. And Brian Hanson, who was the counselor last year, but is not with us tonight. Along with what Levi Simpson was talking about, communication is a key component of the success of a team. We really build relationships with the students. We learn their interests, their talents, things they struggle with, whether it's academically or outside of the school setting. We also learn about their families, we build relationships with their parents. We truly build a partnership with the families and really try to individualize academic experience for their child, not only leading in the next four years of success at school, but also leading them and building a pathway or outside of the high school, and what pathway they will take, whether it's in college or a career. Another thing to emphasize with the communication with families and students is when we're meeting with families, we are individualizing a plan of action for those students. If we're meeting with a family where the child is struggling, we really come together as a team and brainstorm possible outcomes, possible solutions that to help support that child so that they can be successful.
I'm not sure if you want to.
Do we pull up the common sheet?
Yeah, that'd be fine. So as we, as we work through, each cohort will have a common sheet, and these are pieces that we're putting together as we, as we go through. And one of the really interesting pieces on here is where we're able to identify some of our projections, where we're at, but also the, the groups that we're working with. And some of these items, as we're trying to figure out which supports we want to put in place, we'll look at those total numbers and be able to help, help our students out that way. If you scroll down a little, Dr. Phillips, you will see as we're, we're tracking our parent contacts, this is through quarter three, something that's interesting to us as we, as we look at, what's in red on the right-hand side is pre-cohort model. And then what you have, so the 2223 is pre-cohort model. The 2324 is Semester One where we left off. And so we're looking at jumps along the way. And as I stated earlier, we challenged ourselves this year, after reflecting. after reflecting on our processes last year and our successes last year, we were reflecting on that to get to 100% before the end of semester one, which we were able to do. And then we're able to look at breakdowns and have conversations with, so I'm dropping in grades now, to have conversations with department leaders, chairs, and coordinators. And then we also talk about our 50 to 55, or 50 to 59%, and we talk about getting those students who we can gather and hit them to that 60% or above. And so we have a student who's sitting at a 59.1%, and we had a conversation with them, and they may leave our office after sitting in our academic coach's space during their resource for 20 minutes. They may leave and have three assignments done, and all of a sudden they went from a 59.1% to a 65% based on what we were able to help them with. And so we're able to identify that student and the help that they need, and give a little individualized attention to them that they may not have had before, which is so much fun to see and so rewarding to see those successes, and see them get excited about that. Because we don't think about it a 59% or a 55% necessarily being a struggle for someone, but they've just been struggling to get over, over that hump, right? And we're, we're able to give them that final push and help them get there. It's very exciting. And if we can continue to...
Another thing to emphasize on the grades and how we have it broken down by subject, we are also keeping an eye on CVP students, CSA, and McDowell. So while many of those students don't physically attend our particular campus, we are communicating with the directors or leaders of those campuses as well as meeting with those students and keeping an eye on their progress. Also, the academic coaches position. I know Coach Ellenberg really works very hard in developing a partnership with classroom teachers. He is an advocate for students, but also a partner with the classroom teachers. And he creates makeup days around the quarter, pulling in students to help work with assignments or makeup work they may be missing. And a lot of that is coordinated through communication and partnership with those classroom teachers. It is a crucial role in our function as a team, but also the success of our students. In the first quarter, beginning, into the second quarter, we had a pretty large number of students that weren't failing classes. But through the hard work and dedication of Coach Ellenberg, and working with our students and academic coaches' role, we were able to significantly reduce the number of students that were failing that now passed the first semester and earned their credit. So breaking down the progress of students really sheds light on where we need to focus our attentions and developing those communications and partnerships with teachers as well. We can move on down.
I'm going to be honest with you guys, we live in this quite a bit, so we can, we can spend a lot of time talking through this. So I won't, I won't take us through each, each piece individually per se. But I will, I will share with you, if we go down, one thing we look at is our discipline pieces, and we'll break them down through, through quarters and semester. Same thing with attendance. You know, one thing that our academic coaches do tirelessly is work on making contacts about attendance and working on raising our attendance rates, which we've, we've been able to do, and building those relationships and discipline. But if we continue to scroll down, once again, I don't want to eat up a ton of time on this. One piece that ties in, we go to credit deficient students, and maybe identifying students who may not be on pace to get to graduation. And we'll pull those individual students out and allow us and the data and the information that we have and the relationships that we're building, to be able to make those connections. And I know whenever we stepped into this, into this spot, we had several more that were quote-unquote credit deficient. So that means not on pace to be at 40 credits at the end of their senior year. Forty specific credits. So we have to gain 10 specific credits each, each school year. We're able to pull those individuals out and have a little even, even more individualized approach on how we're going to tackle those situations, and whether that's through our other programs or finding other unique ways to help them out. We're able to have those conversations and zoom in even more.
Levi, this are, these are 36 students that are credit deficient from last year's senior class in the third quarter, is that correct?
Going, yeah, going into the fourth quarter. So this common sheet would have been done right at the start of fourth quarter. And so it gives us a snapshot of the final moments, that final push that we're trying to make towards the stage. And then, you know, a large, a large chunk of these, we were able to get across.
That's why I was going to ask you two questions about it.
Yep.
And more interestingly, Mr. Simpson, about how many of those students did you get across the finish line? And then to the communication piece, how many times per week would you say someone from the team was touching base with the students? At North, it's 36 students at this time, at East is a different number. But how many times per week would you say that a member of the team is touching base with these kids that are credit deficient?
On the credit deficient, it's almost daily. And a lot of times, we're double and triple, quadruple dipping. So guidance counselor may have a conversation at, you know, Mr. Rushhour may have had a conversation at 9:00 AM. And then I grad, Lucy, had a conversation at 10:30. And then they come around in the afternoon, and then Ms. Rosenberg and myself had a touch point. They may have come through, we have, we have students who actually find their way to the cohort office to stop in and just say hi, because we've changed that, that culture of, you're not in trouble when you come see us, it's a supportive space. And so then our admin assistant, Mrs. Brown, is also having a contact point. And we're each learning the student's personality and what makes them tick, and finding ways to have those conversations and get them there.
I would say fourth quarter was go time. We were really focused and laser focused on these students. Ms. Abdullah was calling parents and scheduling meetings. We had parent meetings with particular students once a month, and then it started leading to two weeks. Every two weeks, we were having a meeting with the parent and the student and creating a timeline and checking where are they now. Coach Ellenberg and Brian Hanson were checking on our CVP students. And it got to where we had, the majority of students who were behind credits starting that fourth quarter were our CVP. And so Coach Ellenberg was bringing in students and checking every Monday and Wednesday at 2:00, you're going to be in my office working. We would have meetings with those families and set timelines of expectations with progress. We did home visits and talked with parents and students at home that were unable to come to our campus. Kelly Axum was able to really pull through some of our special ed students who were struggling. And it really took a team effort, pulling a lot of these kids and making that progress. And we were able to get all of them to walk across that stage and make.
So I'm scrolling out to look at what I feel like is most... Can I ask you a question now, Lori, again, please? So we have multiple students, like we can see it, at least someone here, that did it in different places. So this is North, but CVP, and I don't know if that means full-time CVP, or kids that are just some, McDowell, are they half-day or full-time? I don't see CSA and UTEC, but thinking about those three, I think, my question is, first of all, my statement is, I would imagine it's a challenge to meet with some of those students who are in your building just prior to they, or maybe not in your building at all. And how has that worked out? How do you meet that challenge?
Last year, CVP was our greatest challenge of 2024. And CVP functioned differently. We had meetings with Mr. Bevel, reviewed over students that were not making the expected progress. And then we would schedule parent meetings, and we would all meet and set timelines and progress. We also met with Mr. Dool about McDowell and worked with Angela Ohm as well with the McDowell students. This year, with the change of how CVP is now operated, we now have more direct input in working with families on those students who are doing the CVP. Something else that we did at East is, at the end of first semester, those students who were CVP, we made decisions, do they continue or do they need to come and return in person? We also scheduled times, if it was CVP, then they had check-ins where they would come to East Campus and either meet with Mr. Hanson or Ms. Coach Ellenberg to work for an amount of time or review their progress in, with the team or with them individually.
I just want to point to the, this, it was this quarter's meeting that we had last year that following, looking at this data, I highlighted there 66.5% of the ads were students who were attending. The majority of their classes had CVP. It was following this meeting that we met with the leaders of both buildings and said, do you want control over which of your students are in your building and which of your students are at CVP? And they said, yes, please. And we immediately made a change starting for this fall. Dramatically changed the relationships between the different, maybe, I won't call them walls, but maybe fences, between the organizations or the sub-organizations, and those are almost entirely gone.
Mr. Allen, to answer your question on where they were located on, from this sheet, so CVP, that's a full-time CVP student that was credit deficient. And so that doesn't encompass our entire CVP load at this point in time, but just those that were full-time and credit deficient. McDowell, it's pretty rare for us to have a full-time McDowell student, right? So just based on the programming, so that those are students who are mostly half-day McDowell, half-day at North. CSA at this time was doing a nice job with their group, and they were all on track at that point in time. Much smaller number in there comparatively, right? Compared to our total number, which we also have at the top.
I would just add to that, that I think one of our great strengths is the many pathways we have for kids to find one that fits them. But when you're doing so, we complicate our jobs, so appreciate you going to the actual...
Thank you.
Answer both the questions about Paul. Welcome, Mr. Edwards. I was going to have the whole group in here, we were going to have a stage, and when you walked in, we were all just standing up to start clapping. Outside of the high side, please. Please.
Well, if you were, if you were going to clap, you probably shouldn't have been clapping for those folks. Don't go anywhere. So it was, I debated on whether or not to start with a joke. I'm not gonna, I'm going to apologize for the G, so I got dressed upstairs as quickly as I could and came down, and we were driving from Indianapolis, listening to the board meeting on, on, on our phone as we drove. And the, there's been a wealth of information shared. And the thing that I, I really love is that everybody who's involved can speak it so fluently. And so it really is, it really is, it really has made a difference for us, so I wanted to say that. But changes to CVP, those were just covered. But the other thing that I wanted to talk about on an earlier slide, and we don't have to go back, but I do want to talk about that what happened when we brought the teaming model to Columbus is they changed the accountability. You know, you go from a system where everybody's responsible for everybody to a system where this particular group of people is responsible for a cohort or a group of students. And so, you know, they become my students. And so they go the extra mile, they make the phone calls to CVP and go visit CVP and work with those leaders to make sure that the students are getting exactly what they need. You know, and so North is over 2,000 students, and David Clark is great, and Michael Parsons is great, but asking them to be responsible and know and understand well what each of those 2,000 students needs, that's a big lift. And so we, you know, brought the team in, and the team has made it their, that's, it's their group of students that they're responsible for for four years. And so I did want to go ahead to the next slide. And so you were just talking about the common sheet and quarter three, and what that looked like. And this is, this is realistically where we were after quarter three. So we meet with the cohorts on a quarterly basis and talk about, and then we meet more than that, but we sit down and we meet with the cohort about four times a year on a quarterly basis to get a really big snapshot of where they are, get a great overview of where they are, look at the common sheet, ask a bunch of questions, and give specific feedback and guidance. And so what, what I've heard them talking about were the steps that they go through on a weekly basis to make sure that everybody's getting exactly what they need. So this slide right here demonstrates or shows how student success is process-driven. It's a process. And so they come to the table every week, and I heard that talked about, and they sit down, and I grad's part of it, and certainly benefits from the, it's a symbiotic relationship with, with I grad. And you'll notice, or you did notice, that they posted their first 100% graduation rate. And it's no coincidence that it happened this year. They were at the table having those same conversations. And so I grad's a part of what we do, special ed is a part of what we do. And again, those are partners that we, we absolutely need because, again, it is a process. So if you look at Columbus North, where they were at the end of quarter three, again, 83.4, and East was sitting around 87.5. And that average is up to 85%, which is not where we landed as a graduation rate. So again, working the process, understanding what folks need, delivering on that on a weekly basis, day in, day out, right? It's the old, how do you eat an elephant? And it's, it's little by little, action by action. And so on a weekly basis, again, we're seeing these actions that lead to student success. Now, I'll just point out that these averages that you see up here, or the numbers that you see up here, those are the realistic graduation rates. So when we ask them, we say, what are you, where are you going to land? And they give us a couple different numbers. They give us the, hey, if everything goes exactly as its planned number, this is where we'll be. And then they give us the, this is a realistic place of where we are right now based on whose credit deficient. If we had to graduate today, this is where we would be. And so that's what this number represents. Next slide. Okay, so waivers, starting with 2324 cohort, you, the state made a change to the waivers and how we were able to function with waivers. And it affected us. The grad rate in North was capped due to the issues of alternate diplomas. And so alternate diplomas are diplomas for students with severe cognitive disabilities. And so the state says you can give up to 1% of your graduating class or your entire cohort can be an alternate diploma. And so we, as a district, 931 was our cohort. And so we, 1%, we could have nine. And we actually, we went over. And so North issued seven, Columbus East issued three, and because of it, we were capped. Our graduation rate was capped. Uh, next slide. So it doesn't say that students can't graduate. It just says that you can't use those numbers to be a part of your, of your graduation rate. You have to take those students out of your graduation rate. So they graduate, and they get their diploma, but they can't count toward your rate if it's over the 1% cap for an alternate diploma. Now, for just the basic waiver, those are capped too. So 9%, then it'll slide to six, and then it'll slide to three. So this year, we could not be over 9% of our graduating class, and we weren't. We didn't even approach it, we were five and some change. And then next year, it slides to 6%, and then it'll slide to 3%, and that's where it will remain. So for us, that... So for us, that amounted to fifty-one students getting a waiver. Okay, this is a slide I've been waiting for. This is, we're probably fifteen minutes into this presentation, and several different slides, and we buried this slide on purpose because it's a lagging indicator, right? This is a, this is an indicator of the work that has gone into the students. And so this, again, speaks to the process. And so, yes, it's super important, but working the processes is what's, what got us here. So ninety point zero one is where we landed. And again, I'm gonna assume that those are applause for the cohort and all the students that they worked with and students put in the hard work, and the parents who put in some hard work too. Next slide. So this one here is special because it shows, again, the impetus for the program. When we dipped to eighty-one zero eight, again, in twenty-two, and that is part of a COVID dip, and we saw that across the state. And again, we don't wanna use COVID as an excuse, but it was part of what happened. This state was at the ten-year level in 2022. And so, again, part of the COVID dip, but then you see how we rebounded. When we, when we rebounded to eighty-three, four, again, we were already working on how do we implement the cohort model? And this is, that demonstrates kinda the dramatic gain that we were able to make in the course of the year. And Dr. Katie Jenner, Secretary of Education for the State of Indiana, said, there is an urgency to continue this positive momentum. And I will echo those words. There is an urgency for us to continue this positive momentum. Next slide. This is interesting. So of the 158 public schools with more than 150 students in there graduated, cohort Columbus East percentage point gain was 10th highest in the state. And Columbus North's percentage point gain was 15th highest in the state, in that group, which is, again, pretty dramatic. And it speaks to the work. And I don't wanna get in the weeds, but when we started the cohort model and these folks took over the senior class, they were already, there were already students who had migrated out of the cohort. And so without going back and explaining how all that works, they were already a little bit behind because there were already students who had decided that they weren't gonna be with us and they weren't gonna continue in school. And so we were working with a limited ceiling is the best way to say it. And so for us to be able to make those kind of gains was pretty impressive. Next slide, here we go. So graduation rates for DCSC versus the state. And this just shows kinda how we moved over the course of the last five years, six years versus the state. And so we were ninety point oh one, the state was ninety point twenty-three. And again, I mentioned earlier that there were a couple students with alternate diplomas that we weren't able to count. But had we been able to count those students, we would be lockstep with the state rate, nine point, ninety point two two, where we would end up. So ninety point oh one officially, we're proud of that, but we were, we were tracking the state pretty hard. Next slide. Yep, this shows some demographic information. And so we made gains on almost every significant demographic area. So our Asian population was up, black, white, Hispanic, multiracial. Our EL and our mult, I'm sorry, our EL and our Hispanic numbers were incredibly impressive. And again, that is under the leadership of Dr. Nicole Leach, who is working very hard with those folks to make sure that those students are getting what they need in conjunction with the cohorts.
Mr. Edwards, I believe I missed this one. The grade is supposed to be twenty-three, graduation rate, is that right?
No, that's against the state. That's against the state.
State versus BCS?
Yep, state versus BCS. Yep. And so I did not, I did not show our gains, but I know them, so I can, I can tell you what they were. Next slide, more demographic information, I believe. Yep. Again, showing how our paid, our free and reduced, our Gen Ed, Special Ed, non-ELL, ELL folks, males and females did. This is pretty interesting. So of the 24 large districts in Indiana with similar demographics to us, so greater than 30% free and reduced, greater than 6% EL, and greater than 12% Special Ed. Our graduation point increase was the highest. So the average growth among those groups was point nine four, so less than a percent. And we were 6.6% points gained. And that's a list of the schools over on the right that we would be comparing ourselves to with the similar demographics. Next slide, please. Diplomatites, this outlines our diplomatites. And I heard Dr. Phillips talking about our academic and technical honors and academic honors earlier. This is pretty incredible because what we noticed was that when we've got a group who are working with a group of students and they are focused on what they're doing, we're able to say, hey, you know, if you just took one more class in this direction, you'd be able to get that technical honors. Or if you just took two more classes, you'd be able to get that technical honors. So that number represents an 88% increase over the largest number of tech honors diplomas that we've given over the past 10 years, which is pretty, pretty impressive. Again, it's the work of the cohort, and it's the work of those folks focusing on what students are doing, coming to the table every week, and noticing when there's an opportunity to help them achieve that at a different level.
That was something this first quarter, when I attended with Mr. Edwards, the meetings at each of the schools, eight different cohort meetings, I was impressed because you can really easily focus on the students who are credit deficient and get in that world and live there, and we need to spend the majority of our time there. But I learned from the cohort teams that many of them, if not all of them, are looking at things like, like Mr. Edwards just said. Well, if this student instead of taking this science class next semester, takes this science class, they're on track to get an honors diploma, and they don't even know it. And so just having that brief conversation with them, then you know if you took this one. And you, as long as you get a C+ or better, you're gonna get an honors diploma when you finish. So it's not only looking at those students that are struggling, it's looking at the whole, you know, the whole group, the whole, all the vendors.
And that is, that's such a true statement, that there are some really academically minded and driven students who walk in our doors, and they know exactly what they're doing when it comes to pursuing an academic honors or an academic honors or technical honors. And they know that, and they are driven and they're doing those things. But we also have a bunch of kids who are just great students, and they come in and they take classes that they're interested in. But they, they're close, and they don't know. And so us being able to say, you know, if you just took one more class, if you just did this, you'd be able to get that diploma.
I don't know if you want to wait to the end, but, and I hesitate to ask this question because I don't wanna take anything away from the remarkable job that they did, but I don't know if I'm reading this correctly. This is what I emailed you about. The top line is students who received academic honors and technical honors. And then the third line is students who received just technical honors. And if you add, so if you look at total technical honors, it's 219 in 2023 and 219 in 2024. So I interpret that as we actually have fewer students qualifying for both honors? And I don't know, I mean, maybe we're asking students to focus more, I don't know, but.
So the thing that I-
There's a question there somewhere.
Yeah. So here's my best attempt to answer. Those numbers have moved independently, if you look at that chart, those numbers tend to move independently of one another. And so we can see that the academic and technical honors has dipped over the years, but it's, so it's up and it's down, so it's weighting. But the thing that I noticed about the technical honors, which is what made me say in the first place is that it was never out of the thirties. Like it was, it was never, like it didn't, it was never, it was never in the fifties. You know what I mean? And so when we, when we see this phenomenon where it's like, well, we've been in the twenties, we've had, we've had, you know, thirties, but then we all of a sudden jump into the fifties, you know, something, something was going on there. And it's like, what was it that caused us to finally, you know, issue so many technical honors diplomas?
But if, if somebody asked me, how many technical honors did DCSC award, or did our students earn? Wouldn't it be the fifty-three plus the 160?
Yeah, no, you're not reading at all. Yeah, yeah. So it's 219, right? It's 219. But what I'm saying is that first line and that third line move independently of one another. There's, there's no, there's, I don't, I don't wanna say that there's not correlation, but really there isn't one. And so when we, when we see the number of technical honors that we were able to award, I don't, I don't, maybe we need more data, like another year of data to be able to look at it and say that it's meaningful. But it's not, it's not something that we've seen, so it was something that I thought I would point out.
Thank you.
Yeah?
I just have one question on the, didn't I graduate in ninety-two? I'm believing, if I remember correctly, our last discussion, this is a four-year graduation rate, so like when you said there was a ceiling. Do you know how roughly how many of that ninety-two, by the time you instituted the team model, were really already past that? So really?
That's a great question, and I don't know the answer. But.
Because essentially, right, that's your opportunity, and as we now have multiple years and years, so I guess that's what I-
That's right.
...forward is, I don't know, maybe we were able to say essentially a little, a little under half from the last year, so I mean, I would assume that would pick up.
Yeah.
Mrs. Chamberlain, Mr. Simpson, do you have any idea what we took over, how many, where were we at? How about a numerator?
So the exact number, I do not have off the top of my head, but there, the max point that we could have, could have reached would not have been much, would not have been much higher than what we were able to get to. There were, there were maybe a handful of percentile points that we could have moved from, from that point in the, in the low nineties. So as, as Mr. Edwards said on the front end, we came in and there were some numbers that were already moving in a different direction, so.
Yeah, and so the thing that, hesitant like this, but I'm gonna say it anyway. The thing that, you know, I'm excited about is I'm excited to see the first four-year graduation rate with the cohort model. And that's not to take anything away from the folks who are, you know, haven't had their students for four years. Because they're certainly doing some phenomenal things. But that first four-year group will, that'll tell us a lot. Is there, is, okay. And so additional strategies, I think this is the last slide. But the thing that, again, we kept learning as we were going through this school year last year. And so we were able to do some things that would give students additional opportunities to pass. And so it was like, well, what else can we do? And how else can we help students? And when can we get, you know, how can we give them more opportunities, more chances? And so, again, summer school for the cohort, that was something that we did that was extremely successful. Bringing folks back in person. So this was the CBP change that we talked about. Because what we knew is that if we could get students into the school, have them be around the cohorts, they had a greater chance for success. But we also know that there are students who need to be virtual, and so we respect that. But that is now a decision that is being made by the folks who are running the cohorts. Because they want their students in their buildings so they can get as many chances as possible to help them. The instant accountability, again, remaining on a weekly basis, we know who needs what, when. If we know that somebody's not doing homework, when the meeting breaks up, we can go get that student, bring them down in the office, and have them sit in the office and do some homework, and then we can get it back to the teacher. And it's a, it's a, it's a closed loop. So we, we get the student and they do the homework, and then we don't give the homework back necessarily. We take it to the teachers so that it doesn't get lost or corrupted and bottomed back. So for those of you with children, you know exactly what I'm talking about.
Oh, by children, you mean boys.
I mean, boys.
High school boys.
That's exactly. So the nine-week evaluation, that was something that we had never done before, that the schools had never done before. And so it was interesting that, you know, after the first nine weeks, they were able to take a look and say, are our students in the right classes? You know, are, you know, is, you know, this student having too tough a time in a super advanced math course or a super advanced English course? And do we need to kinda right-size this student? So again, by looking at data, we were able to recognize some opportunities, and those were things that we did. Is there another slide? This is the last slide, I can't remember.
This is the last one. I just, I put the, this up here for a question slide, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump and add on to this that the most, I will call it the most exciting thing that I've learned in the two quarters that I've set through these meetings and participated in these meetings with the A-teens, is the work that each team is doing to end it. And so you'll sit in one of those meetings and you'll hear about, well, we learned that it's, it's kids in biology that are really struggling. And so we talked to the Science Department Chair, and now the Science Department Chair and the teacher are, during the advisory period, they're polling kids who are struggling with biology and just working with those students on biology because they have the list of kids. They got it from the office, they know exactly who needs what, and they're targeting their efforts towards the students who need a very specific outcome. That's just one example. We learned of another group that's taking students who are either native Spanish speakers or they speak Spanish at home, who are seniors and who are doing well academically. Those kids during their advisory or during their resource period are coming down and working with freshmen who are struggling with the English language. Not that they can't speak conversational English, but reading a biology textbook or an algebra two test book is incredibly difficult for someone who's not a native English speaker. It's that academic language. So a student who speaks Spanish well is working, you know, a high academic student is working with someone who's struggling. Those things are happening every week across our eight cohorts. And I'm excited about the, when each of those things gets ingrained across all of them. I'm gonna mention another one that's not up here right now, and that's the already proactive effort to reach out to middle school kids. And so that, you know, the senior, the senior groups right now, they're already thinking about, and even I believe they've gone to the middle schools and met with the eighth graders just to start building a relationship. Gone and had conversations with the eighth grade teens about, hey, this is who we are. If you come to East, I'm gonna be your assistant floor. I'm gonna be your academic, your counselor next year. And so the pushing that down, reaching that down into middle school level is gonna be another one of those things that continues to, to grow the capacity and is to really impact these students.
I'm gonna say a couple more things, then I'm gonna wrap. I get, I could talk about it a long time. It's been a great thing for us. But I just wanna say, Lori Chambly never, and I don't wanna discount the work that anybody's doing, but Lori Chambly is the principal that you all asked me questions about last year, how's she doing because she has two cohorts. So she was, she was running two cohorts at Columbus East last year and managed to turn out a pretty spectacular result with the 2024 cohort. So I just wanna give Lori a special shout-out because, again, she worked really hard. And then I will say that this is built on principles that we wouldn't want to build any of our programs on. Relationships, outcomes for students, and accountability. So those three things have combined to help us really land in the CSC. And we know that every cohort will present its own unique set of challenges, but based on what we know right now, it's working exactly the way we want it to.
Mr. Edwards, Lori introduced some of her roles.
Mr. Edwards, I, Lori introduced, um, some of her folks. Could you both come back up to the microphone? Please have the members of your teams from last year who are here stand up for us, please, thank you.
Sure, and thank you, Mr. Edwards, for your kind comments. But I couldn't have done it without my amazing team. Please stand and come up here.
Yes, have her come on up.
Yes, come on.
Thoroughly embarrassing.
They really are an amazing group to work with. Um, we've got Carrie Abdullah, my administrative assistant, who calls all the parents and schedules all those meetings for us. Kelly Axum, who works with our special education students. And Trent Hillenberg, our academic coach. And then Ryan Hanson was our counselor last year as well. And they are just really a tremendous group, really a pleasure to work with and dedicated and committed to those students.
All right, you have, uh, Igrad, you come up first, Bob and Lucy at Igrad. They're in our, our meetings each morning, uh, going through that process with us. And then special ed coordinator Daniel Ho comes, comes into our meetings. Our guidance counselor, counselor Sandy Freshour. And then our academic coach, last year we had one of the seniors, it was Amy Rosenberg. And then our admin assistant, who cannot be here today, was, uh, is Mickey, Becky Brown, excuse me, Becky Brown. So she could be here in a second. Here's our team.
Okay, now I'm working on that, I promise. Dr. Parsons and, uh, Mr. Park, uh, thank you for, um, again, being, um, working with these folks and, and training them and providing, uh, providing the environment where they can get pride. So, uh, the building principles have been absolutely essential in this as well. Questions?
Yeah, yeah, the half-year mark, what is, uh, the current projected graduation rate for this class?
So I've got a bunch of numbers that I managed to compile, but that's not one of them. But I can tell you, uh, that it's over ninety percent.
Thank you.
And to put you on the spot, the closer you get to perfect, the harder it is. I recognize that. So I might not expect six point six percent next year. But if you were a vetting person, Mr. Edwards, what kind of a perfect do you think you would expect to see?
So it's not putting me on the spot, it's putting those folks on the spot. And so I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna say it out loud. But I, I really do think that we'll, uh, approach ninety-two if, uh, if not, if not better.
Um, I think there were two, um, areas where we significantly outpaced the state average. Um, English language learners was one of them, and special ed. So, um, Ms. Kelly, Mr. Ho, Ms. Vogel in the back and Ms. Lunden. I can spot those spaces here in the room that, that, um, really makes that, that department, our programs there work for students. I don't want to get around with applause, thank you very much.
And while we're handing out kudos, I'm sitting here right now, but we know the person who was sitting here last year when this work was done, leading, helping lead this district is also in the room, Dr. Roberts. I think back there somewhere. Congratulations, you have been a great. Thank you for the good questions and really allowing us to, um, celebrate this. We appreciate it.
So, um, I would like to maybe celebrate us as a board. There was some discussion, this came up. I know the quandary was, do we implement it right away or do we plan for a year and then implement it? And it's, um, obvious from this that we've made the right decision to implement it right away. I have, well, another comment or request, I think. When we were adopting this new program, um, there was a teacher survey that really was not strongly in favor of it. And I've, I think I've mentioned this before, but now that it's been in place, I would love to see a teacher survey again down the road of, I'm assuming that a lot of teachers have changed their mind on whether or not this is a good plan. But, but it would be nice to survey the, the teachers at, at the high schools and see what their feelings are at this point. And, um, well, I guess my other challenge, and you already mentioned your goal for next year. Statistically, regression towards the mean would say we're gonna go down next year. And, and I fully get that challenge statistically, but I appreciate the efforts. And I think with two years of doing this, how can we not go up?
So, uh, really quickly, is we just, um, to listen to the teams talk among one another and talk about what they're gonna do and how they're gonna get students more involved, um, I, they, they keep getting better. And so they keep learning things and then they implement those things right away. And again, just to be a fly on the wall in some of the meetings, to hear the way that they talk about some of the things that they're doing. And then the thing that I'll mention, because it just sticks out, uh, quarterly news. And some of her folks, uh, hosted a, I can't, I don't even know what it was called. But they hit a bunch of reindeers around, uh, around Columbus North. And folks had to go around and buy a reindeer. If you found a reindeer, you could turn it in and you could, you know, for a prize. And so it seems trivial, um, it seems small, but if you like coming to school, um, then you're gonna go. And if you can get into what's happening while you're there, um, that's, that's where the magic happens. That's, and so every little thing that they're doing, and they do those things that these two, every little thing that they do to get students and teachers to want to be there and create a better atmosphere, um, is, is making the team stronger, making the school stronger and making the challenge maybe a little easier.
And I, I do have one question to help my understanding. And I actually warned Mrs. Vogel that I might ask this, if you want to turn to her, you can. But, but help me and us understand, so there's waivers, there's alternative diplomas and, and also, I mean, the whole spectrum of special ed. We have students in life skills. Are they part of our graduation rate? How does that, how does that all fit in?
Yeah, I'll take a swing at it. Um, so the answer to your question is yes, they are a part of the graduation rate. And, um, the, the alternate, the alternate diploma. So some folks say alternative, some folks say alternate, like officially it's the alternate diploma. And so that is a diploma for folks with severe cognitive disabilities. And so this is the thing that kind of, uh, um, I had a hard time with. Because how do we say, we're only gonna give out X number if we have more than that who have done the work and who are deserving and who should get those? How do we cap it at one percent? Like how, how do we decide who gets one and who doesn't? So that, that for me was, was difficult. But the answer to your question is yes. So students with severe cognitive disabilities can receive an alternate diploma, but the state caps that at one percent of, of your graduation rate.
And then the waivers, if students qualify for a waiver, that's a regular diploma. That's.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would just like to second one of the points about the survey. Because that was one of the, when we were doing the deliberation, I think it was a year and a half ago, that was one of the major points. It kind of came in at the eleventh hour, if I recall. Ninety teachers from the teacher union, I believe there was only one, maybe two that were slightly favorable. The rest of them were, um, asking for a delay in opposition to it. And so, I mean, I believed in it, but at the same time, I had to leave the people on the ground. And so I think not only would I say that we need a teacher survey, I think also we should look at the parents and see like, how do you feel about this? How is this making you feel engaged? And then also the students perspective, I think we get those three as part of the survey. Uh, I'd still recommend use the same source, so it's super embarrassing, but, uh, for the teachers. But the others, I think we could do that through, uh, the, you know, regular power school. Thanks.
All right, I think we are on to the public comments portion of our meeting tonight. Just to remind everybody what this process looks like. Um, if you attend a board meeting, there is a blue sheet at the table on the edge of the room. If you'd like to speak, um, you can sign up on the sheet, it's passed around to us. You get three minutes, there is a timer over there to help you stay on time. And we do need to stay on time, we'll make sure to stick to that. Um, if you have someone that has spoken before you and they've made your point, it's okay to pass. Just say, I agree with so-and-so and you can move on. Um, please do not use the names of individual students, staff members, et cetera. Don't use specific titles. It's the same thing, we can't say the principal at the east side table. It's the same thing, we wanna make sure we're, we're, um, being respectful. And, um, and then no cheers and cheers from the audience. It, it is sometimes difficult to get up and speak in front of, in front of a room. So if you have that, you can people pat on the back by the limit, get back to their seat or speak to them afterwards. Okay? All right, so first name I have on this piece of paper is Humphrey.
Yeah, my, my first name, I swear.
Okay, I'm very sorry about that. See, you're already introducing yourself, you can get my man.
Uh, no problem. Is it on? Okay, yeah, it's on. Hey, everybody, welcome back. Um, thank you, first off, for accountability for the weather decision on Friday. I kept my home, my kid home from school that day because I didn't like the decision that was made to keep school in session. My nephew attends Mount Healthy, which is out off of fifty-eight, going towards Backwoods. And my brother had to leave work early and go pick him up from I care, or from school because I care was canceled. And it was hectic, it was crazy, and the roads were absolute garbage by the time he got to driving out there. I know you talked about a few points and covered actually most of what I was gonna talk about. But one thing that I am concerned about, um, the walk zone for our schools is half a mile from the homeschool that that student attends. There's safety concerns there because the sidewalks aren't cleared. And we have students that are walking in the streets at seven-thirty in the morning when it's dark outside because they don't wanna walk in the snow that's still covering the sidewalks. And I understand y'all can't control the snow on the sidewalks, but at the same time, take into consideration the safety of those students that are commuting that way. Because not all of them have the luxury that my child does, being in the walk zone, I can take him to the car. Because if I had to walk with him all the way to his school, it wouldn't happen and he wouldn't go because I'm not walking in six inches of snow on sidewalks that haven't been treated in any way, shape or form. And a quarter to a half an inch of ice packed down underneath of them. It's dangerous, it's slick, and it's a fall hazard on top of several other things. We have people that don't pay attention when they drive. We have people that just are completely oblivious to these kids walking on the streets. And I hear a lot of people or I see a lot of comments online where people are like, buckin' my day. Well, it's not your day. I care about my kid. I know other, other people care about their kids. There are things that need to be done and put in place to keep our kids safe. And I know you guys do it to the best of your ability at that time. And holding yourselves accountable for mistakes made or decisions made is fabulous. But at the same time, every county surrounding us on Friday canceled school and had an e-learning day. Every single surrounding county. And we did not. And we had buses that took two hours to get kids home because the weather was trash. We had parents that were panicking to get to their kids. And I know we had teenage drivers from high schools that were leaving and don't know how to drive in this weather. So I just ask that you guys take that into consideration the next time the weather is Indiana. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, I'd like to thank Dr. Phillips for taking account of it earlier. I didn't know who I was writing this to earlier. I just had concerns and wanted to write it, so. My name is Randy Day. I've come here this evening as a proud B C S E employee of more than four years, hopefully more than ten. I'm also very proud to be this month's transportation employee of the month, as well as driver of bus one sixty-five, which is also in Mount Healthy area. I'm also here as a parent, a grandparent, and a genuinely concerned citizen of Wake Forest County. I take my job very seriously, which is why I'm here today. On Friday, January the tenth, a decision was made, very old as usual, for B C S E district. This evening, the information was provided, forecasted very grim weather, evidence of potential danger. The student body was equipped Thursday with their tablets in preparation for an e-learning day. Or at the very least, an early dismissal was this talk. As you're aware, neither of those things happened, the students were sent and for a full day of school, thus causing them to be sent home right in the middle of the winter storm that had been predicted. This is where I'm genuinely concerned, as they were released onto terrible road conditions and passable roadways and many experienced automobile slide-offs, as well as wrecks and grommings. To further the carnage, many of those students were sent on buses that also experienced many of the same situations listed before. Many buses became stuck on the slick roadways or slid off into ditches, some with children on board. I was in one of those buses, I was stuck until six-thirty P M. Luckily, I had dropped off my last student. How that decision was made to have school that day needs to be investigated. Whoever is responsible for the decision needs to be held accountable. Just as my colleagues have been recommended for voicing their opinions openly on social media, so shall you be recommended for collectively endangering the lives of thousands of students, teachers, bus drivers, parents, and people of the community. I'm here today to voice my concern publicly as a B C S E employee, of our Wake County resident, and tell you shame on you. Shame on you, whoever was involved in a poor decision made that endangered so many. I truly hope the lessons were learned and the next time, excuse me, the next time a situation like this arises, it will be considered more carefully, more respectfully to the community as a whole. And I'll leave you with this, problems are good. Problems give us a chance to resolve, to problem solve, to find an answer or a way to make a problem better. Today, I ask you to solve this problem, to apologize to those affected, to assure the respective community that you represent, that this will not happen again. Then again, all that has been addressed and I admire and thank you.
Hello. Uh, first of all, I'm gonna apologize and I'm probably gonna reiterate some things that have already been said, but they're infected now. So now I can forget it. Um, again, my name is Lacy. Uh, I live here in Wake Forest County, I have a two-year-old daughter. Sorry, I have a second grader that's seven years old and I have an eleven-year-old in sixth grade. I'm a nursery area age and I deal with unknown factors on a daily basis. I completely understand the weather is not completely predictable. However, I feel as though B C S E has completely dropped the ball with the safety of our children and they have all the known factors at their fingertips. It is deeply concerning that the safety of our children is not the forefront of our education system. B C S E has most critics in town, but also a lot in the country. I live in town, a very popular neighborhood. Until this day, I'm having trouble getting out of my driveway. I cannot fathom how bad the country roads have been if I'm still having trouble living in town. As an R N, I'm very well-prepared to deal with weather. I have to report regardless of weather. But if the hospital where I work is still providing rides to get staff to work, there's no way that buses should be transporting children back and forth. I am concerned with the decision to hold school while all the surrounding counties are delayed or canceled. We are under the same bread and orange weather advisories as surrounding counties. After speaking with the city and county emergency management and with the knowledge of surrounding cancellations, I cannot fathom our school's corporation. I cannot fathom our school corporation made the call to go ahead with the school and remain there at last week. Why are we not being as proactive and planning for the worst-case scenarios when it comes to the well-being of our children, our faculty, and our community? There were multiple reports of buses getting stuck, sliding off of roads, taking much longer and time to get home, and self-communication delays and cancellations were not had. Concerned Friday, I spoke earlier, that is a nursing work with the unknown factors. But on Friday, we had the factors of plenty of warning and still the ball was dropped. It had been snowing for a few hours and still less than 25 minutes before dismissal, the call was made for Icare to be canceled. My child's crum book was sent home on Thursday. Why was there still school on Friday when the prediction was that the snow would start at 10? You simply cannot drop the ball or have a miss when you're handling children as young as toddlers in pre-k, kindergarten, and up. I understand you cannot make decisions to please everyone, and making these calls has to be incredibly hard. But I can't reiterate enough that the safety of our children has to be the most important. And unfortunately, it's felt across the board that it was not handled the correct ways past week. I hope with the upcoming forecasted inclement weather, that better decisions can be made with our children at the forefront of the decision making.
Good evening, everyone, happy new year. My name is Holden and I live on the north side of Columbus. And I also first just want to take a moment to express my thanks to Dr. Phillips for the tremendous humility that it takes to admit when you've made a wrong decision. And I really appreciate the accountability that you've taken here tonight. The issue I want to speak on has to do with student safety, but does not have to do with snow, but it's to a certain extent an issue that I've discussed here in the past, and that's the issue of violence within our schools. So since your last regularly scheduled meeting, a school shooting occurred on December 16th at Abundant Life Christian School in Madison, Wisconsin. A student and teacher were fatally shot and six others were wounded. The start of the new year in school is usually exciting and refreshing, but not for those affected. This, like many other acts of violence taken towards schools, feels as if it disappeared just as quickly as it had occurred. The news headlines move on. And accountability at the local level is brushed aside with the mentality of it will never happen here, or there's nothing that we can do about that. Both of those positions are finances. I call on this board to continue to ensure that all necessary steps are being taken to prevent such an act from taking place at our schools. All kids deserve to feel safe when they go to school. I remember when I was a student in BCSC and seeing the news of Sandy Hook in Portland and thinking, "What if I'm X?" And I know kids are seeing the same news and they're likely asking the same questions. And that is a crying shame. And as the newly elected school board members are sworn in, I think it's important to call out all forms of violence, especially political. The previous election for your seats in hold was particularly enthusiastic, so I think that's a good word. And unfortunately, with enthusiasm often comes anger. Whether it be heated debates regarding school curriculum, or library materials, or discussions involving within 2030, it's imperative to remember that we should treat others how we would want to be treated. And that goes for all present here tonight. During the past election cycle, threats of violence were made towards candidates. I witnessed threatening behavior towards sitting board members simply for the views that they held or for the votes that they had taken, and that is unacceptable. We should settle our disagreements at the ballot box or here during public comment. And that being said, that is why I think it is much more important for the safety and security of students, teachers, board members, and the public, that safety is a priority. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for the public comments for this evening.
I'll cover these. These are some approvals that are outside of the normal monthly board meetings. These are annual approvals related to the business office under number nine A through D. Those are all related to appointments and authorizations on part of the boards of the business office to appoint, or Mrs. Greiner as the Corporation Treasurer, Paul Petros as the Deputy Treasurer. Those are both currently in the fourth floor, same persons. And then authorizing them to continue the S funds and then also approving bonds to ensure not only our treasurer, deputy treasurer, but each of the school treasurer's special. I request approval for items nine A through nine D. I move that we approve line items nine A through nine D, Asham.
Sir, second?
Second.
Mr. Allen. All those in favor of approving items nine A through nine P, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. We should carry a second here, Mr. Greiner.
Item number 10 is also board organization, annual board organization requirement. These items include the board reading moon narration. Say that 10 times fast. These are, this is the board heading, remains the same as the prior year and is set by law. That's item 10A. Item 10B is meaning the Republic as the official newspaper where we advertise our public notices. And then item C is our several public disclosures conflict of interest, both for members of the administration as well as members of the school board. Request approval of items 10A through 10C. I move to re-approve items 10 Alpha through 10 Charley.
Sir, second? Your 10?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Major. I did want to point out, just for people who are interested, those conflict of interest ones are located on Word docs and they were available if anybody would like to see what is. So all those in favor of approving items 10A through C, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. We should carry a second here.
Item 11A through item 11P are the board appointments and community liaisons to both BCSC committees as well as community organizations. Those are included in the package meetings, aren't on the screen, but they are in the package. So we request approval of items 11A through 11B.
So I think I have a motion here, but I don't know which version of the board packets. When I saw it once, it was corrected, and I think it's incorrect. So my motion, if it's stated that way, it is. So I have, for the past year, been the board rep for the council for youth development. I will be taking on two new roles around legislative liaison. So my motion is that that assignment would be given to Wimmy Lloyd. Aside from that, I think that she would do a tremendous job there and probably better than I have done.
So I have a motion to amend the board appointments for, and also for youth development from Mr. Allen to Mrs. Lloyd, I would need a second.
My second.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. All those in favor of amendment to, oh, is there a discussion?
She didn't hear you.
Yeah, that's why I was...
It would be my pleasure.
She didn't exactly follow what he was talking about, so I'm not sure. All those in favor of amending item 11 and to be assigned to Ms. Lloyd, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. So we now have an amended 11 that we would need to make a motion on.
So I have a motion to approve line items 11A through 11L, amended 11M than the original 11N through P.
Mr. Schultz, one minute.
Or is it Mr. Grimes?
I think I heard a second, Mr. Major, thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of what Mr. Schultz said, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. We should carry a second here.
Thank you very much. Under old business, we have amendments under regular school board meeting of December 9th until 2024. Request approval of old business item 4. Move to approve line items 12A, ask for second. My second.
Mr. Schultz and Mr. Allen, any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving item 12A, minutes for this amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. We should carry a second here.
Thank you very much. Under new business items 13, sorry, 13A through 13K, they include the normal approvals of supplemental contract, leads, fundraisers, the claims for December 2024 pre-runs. The large dollar amount there is reflective of our semi-annual debt payments that happen every December and every June. And then two payrolls that occurred on December 13th and December 27th. Item E is the renaming, sorry, I should say the original naming of the Columbus North Press Box. Columbus North honored Sam Simmermaker back in the fall prior to the Northeast football game. And so we request formal approval now from the board retroactive to approve the naming of that press box in honor of Mr. Sam Simmermaker. The two appointments are also organizational items, item F and G are the appointment of the school physician, Dr. Jennifer Hurwell, and the continued appointment of Mr. Michael Geiger as our school attorney. We also have landscape contracts for calendar year '25 and '26 in the item H. Item I are the contracts for the second phase of Johnson Early Learning Center that Dr. Rose referred to earlier. And then under item J, the final transfer for 2024 between the education fund, the education fund and operations fund. That final transfer puts us where we are, right at under 10% of the education fund budget, the maximum set by state laws at 15% transfer. And then the last item, item K, is a becomes ready, ready with a Y grant, as there was also a ready with a I grant that were involved. But it becomes ready grant to support STEM work across the district for $100,000 as to approval for the board to accept that grant. Request approval of items 13A through 13K. I move to approve line items 13A through 13K, is presented. Second.
Mr. Schultz and Mr. Major, are there any questions?
I have a discussion point on 13J. I know we've had this discussion several times on transferring money from education operations, but they're collecting relatively sizable rainy day funds. I do think it's in the public interest, I think the reasoning behind it has been the state's changed accounts of what can be paid for out of one one percent the other. I would like to see a future meeting, the pluses and minuses of what would have been versus what we've transferred, just to make sure that we're remaining whole in that aspect. So when we say that A, these line items would have been paid for out of education fund, the old concept, which is why we allow 10% transfer, let's see a list of line items and make sure it matches up with the amount transferred.
I can provide that to the board the next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
The only thing I had is on I for Johnson Early Learning. I think we've heard from teachers that have talked about elementary, middle school, and high school changes to the schools and the development process for how they arrived at what ultimately the school's gonna look like. Because early learning is so much different than those others, it'd be good to have some of those teachers that are part of that design team come in and speak to you and just kind of share with their experience and what those changes look like for those kids. Because they're not 12 years old, we're talking about little ones. So it's a different thought process in how they manage a room and the things that they put into place for those kids. So it might be good to just hear from them too.
Any other questions, discussions? I have a motion, a second, to approve 13A through K. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. We should carry a second here.
Good evening, board. The seven human resources recommendations consist of five appointments and two resignations. I request that you please approve the personnel recommendations as presented.
I move to approve line items for 10A, ask for second by Dr. Stolper. My second.
Mr. Schultz and Mr. Allen. All those in favor of approving...
One easy question is just to understand halfway through the year, how are we looking as far as, we've had some people retire, resign, move around. Are we, do we have like five openings or 50 openings? Just kind of, just an update to see what your workload looks like.
Yep, so I'm gonna speak to certified staff only because last five, there are a lot of complexities there. So we have three openings right now for certified staff, specifically speech at Richards, C for Health Science Pathway, and an English position at East. And we do have a plan and are filling those with certified teachers right now.
Thank you.
I have a motion, a second, to approve 14A, is presented. All those in favor of this ad?
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. We should carry a second here.
Thank you. And the additional human resources recommendation for this evening consists of one appointment. So I again request that you please approve the additional human resources recommendation as presented.
I move that we approve the additional human resource recommendation as presented. My second.
Mr. Allen and Mr. Major, any questions or discussion items? Okay, all those in favor of approving 14B is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. We should carry a second here. Okay, board input interview. Mr. Allen here, so I don't put me on the spot or first line.
I'll push you on.
Yeah. First of all, I don't even know what I heard, but recently, I listened to many podcasts, but I heard that part of the interview for going to the International Space Station, they asked, "When was the last time you apologized to somebody?" So I, which, the rationale is that you're really very close to people. But anyway, in light of that, Dr. Phillips, I really appreciate your transparency and honesty and your reflection on the decision. I also, I was wondering that same day, like, we have it to our delay plan, why don't we have it to our early release plans? I don't know what it would look like, that's up to you, but I appreciate that you're thinking along those lines. And the, of course, the graduation day was absolutely fabulous. I am gonna continue to beat this drum, that I don't want to wait until next year when we get our graduation rate to talk about it again. We just finished first semester, and Levi Simpson was absolutely accurate, and he said, "They live with that form every day." To us, it's pretty overwhelming. But I think that this year's senior cohort groups would be very capable of taking the semester data, comparing it to last semester senior, and giving us an update of how we're doing so far. I don't want to wait, I want to celebrate again, but I don't want to wait until next year if it's time to celebrate that. So it's one of our goals, let's talk about it every time. And finally, in my new role as legislative liaison or whatever it is, we don't meet again for a month, and the legislature started meeting this week. I don't have any specific updates, and I'm sure I will not do as good a job as Mr. Grimes did. But I will tell everyone, board members and everyone, that ISBA has a website, isba-ind.org, or you just search Indiana School Board Association, and go to the legislative tab and open that tab, and there's some really cool things there. I mean, there's a, each week, there's a three-minute video. In three minutes, you can get what's really important. And there's also a, there will be a bill tracker, which is probably pretty overwhelming because there are gonna be over 100 education bills. And then there's a weekly newsletter that you can link on. So there's a lot of stuff there that you don't have to wait...